Welcome to Boy Scout 2091 from St. John's Evangelist Catholic Church. They're working on a citizen citizenship community badge. I'm going to invite them up to a lead us in prayer and then lead us in the pledge as well. Please stand.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know compared to extent that my acting as a city attorney at the foreplace, he has been activated here and if you get to your, you guys can stay a little bit or you can go as a school. It's not just completely empty. And long and. All right, we can move on to the awards of presentation. We have a presentation by staff, recommendations for revision of the land development regulations, chapter three twenty-eight, involves landscape planners and screen, and a boundary city engineer. Good luck Tuesday, free Monday.
And obviously didn't expect this to be discussion either this evening. I thought this was a presentational, usual work session. But if you have any additional questions that have come from President, Senator discussion on Tuesday, if you have.
Will you do that by email? Yes.
And do you need me to?
No, no action. Method. That's all your hard work. You're awesome. All right, and a brief, uh, group of minutes. Councillors have time for a brief minutes for February six, twenty twenty-five, very good meeting. Are there any conditions or deletions? Here are none through my acclamation, this is from February twenty, the meeting is still forthcoming. We will honor our public hearing item from the evening. I made consideration of ordinance for conditional use permit for our plastics manufacturing facility. Mathmark represent. Thank you for that.
This is a request for conditional use permit in N one zoning for a tenant intention without use of the plastics manufacturing facility. As we talked about the course session, when I'm actually making the plastic material, that extruded the plastic material, two other things. An applicant is that the host lines can develop an authority. And that current tenant, which is the utility plastics. There's a letter we can't describe in our operation that's there to package. For the property itself, you see the zoning pattern of N one. This is the west side business park, a planned industrial park under N one zoning, which is mostly like manufacturing or warehousing. This is just under ten acres in size. It's eighteen or fourteen little boulevards right in the center of the park. Care area for Australian area. You see the industrial activities and destination in the early image a couple of years ago. This is way after the bakery, it was first built, which you see really to the east. Since that time, we've been several other industries that have located in. Subject property was set building number two, that's built right after the bakery site. That's now being occupied by this new industry that are finishing up the preparations for that building. You may remember a conditional use permit for distribution set a few months ago to the southies and some other industries nearby that did not get our special maintenance approval. A survey in your packet shows the property just over ten acres. Existing building is rated a hundred thousand square feet. It's a pretty good sized facility. Photograph of the subject property as seen from the boulevard, looking at it as a pretty good sized building. Still in unfinished kind of state, but it'll be soon changing. And this will be the main entrance off of the road. It goes down behind building and that's where the truck base already located. Adjacent properties, this is one of the industries down the street, bakery on the backside of it. And then this is that big lot, you get group distribution set up a few months ago. Construction has not been started yet. In your packet also has a site finished on the building and the layout of the site. There's a lot of new pavement to get to be installed. And so with this one is a conditional use request amount to the planning commission. They found a request consistent with the promised plan, consistent with the conditional use for B criteria, which will be a package. And a regular approval, subject to two conditions. First one, proof should be granted in the name completely of the utility plastics LLC for plastics manufacturing facility in N one zoning district in general quarters with a submitted letter of intent. Number two, conditional use approval, should expire one year from the date of approval. If the proposed use is now fully completed and operational by that date. The hour of notice here, glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, I think we're done.
Just one quick note if you would. It's been a while since I've heard about there. And if your photograph there does that site no justice.
It's changed form against it is essential for.
Yeah, development there has been lacking in our park out there. It's really good.
We're looking for new grass, everybody asked that. We're not a real. Back that. This is a public hearing item. Is anybody in favor of this request to do so now? Anybody in favor of this request? Saying none, is there anybody see in opposition to this request? Again, saying none, Council, it's your direction.
May I make a motion to approve the request as presented before you continue?
Second. Motion to second, all papers, show hands. Fantastic, exciting projects. I have five, consideration request to approve a vendor for the city of Austin's human capital management system. For example, one of those HCMs, Ted Boyer, our resource director, Ted Henry.
Good thinking. Um, leading here, Council, as we discussed in the Tuesday's one session, this agenda item is a request to approve a vendor for a new human capital management system. The current system of record no longer meets our needs. Unfortunately, it is outdated, increasingly problematic, and we honestly suspect it's just a matter of time before there's an announcement that Tyler Technologies intends to sunset this product. We won't have issues currently and we call for assistance. We are often mad at it, well, that's just how the system works or we don't need to change that. Well, we don't know why that happened. Um, just this week, as a matter of fact, we had one entire department whose payroll did not import into the system property. Tyler Technologies has confirmed the import was done properly on our end. They confirm that the file looks accurate, yet they cannot explain why it didn't come in properly. Fortunately, it has impacted only one person's hourly check as the rest of their department was salary. Just in my technology, if that were a department, mostly our main employees who were not getting properly. Um, you know, in addition to the challenges of trying to correct that, I don't want to sound employee that I don't have any experience or anything was wrong. Unfortunately, we're encountering that problem. We do recognize that the cost for our business system is not insignificant. During this process, our goal has been simple, to identify the best solutions to meet our current future needs, but always ensuring that any additional cost from significant added value. Councilman Herb, you asked me a great question, I'm sure you'll answer it for us today. And I very much appreciate that question because, you know, Councilman McIntyre, when you and I first met, we talked about this system and you asked about it and I said, yeah, it, it, it works. You know, it's not for us, it's not for you, it's not sexy, but it works. So I can't tell you if it's going to continue to work, you know. And Councilman Herb, what it gives us, um, you know, is, is I think peace of mind. It gives us the confidence in the integrity of our system. I have provided some bad system handouts on some of the hobbies we talked about. But after what happened this week with payroll, I kind of took a step back and reflected and I said, have I really answered that question? And one of the things I want to share is just the key things that pay losses will superfluous on me. It will reduce the need for our employees to visit HR and replace the demographic changes. But we will make these employees will be able to make these changes for the core, the time and place for this to be made for them. You know, we all have a way of twenty-seven, forty-four seven employees. You know, if I retire, they may not want to visit us every day. You know, when they need to come to any time with their family, they can't visit us when they're on shift easily because, you know, they need to be available at this office. You know, we have our place office to work second shift and then have to take time out there all the time to come to get some in-very simple, whatever we change. Pay lossing will already reduce the inequities in payroll. Right now, we're averaging three to five employees per payroll who receive incorrect entries and other avoidable issues. The system simply does not meet our needs in this area. It will eliminate many data entry touch points. It will increase data accuracy as well as create a HR staff to focus on more strategic initiatives that will best support our employees and their needs. You know, we have, we have a very small department and we spend a lot more time on data entry. That is absolutely something that's never going to completely go away, but it is something where we can, we can take that time and better focus in other areas. If there's one thing we have to do right, it's to pay our employees. Right off my map, we can make a YouTube for them to take care of, one thing we need to take care of at a time to listen to this convenience shop. Pay lossy puts our employees in the center of the system. When we were looking at vendors, it wasn't a question of do we need a vendor? Do we need a new vendor? It was a question of who's vendors are writing for us. At this critical of the board evaluation, we are certain that pay lossy is the best way to replace our current system. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, additional questions from Tuesday?
Is this something that they can? Um, I miss this because I was in my dollars on this name.
I will too.
Um, is this something they can download as an app on their phone and be able to make exchanges?
Yes, so there, when pay lossy comes, there's a web version, there's an app version. They are seamless, you can log into the app, you can log into the web. And everything they need is right there in their address. So they can, they can request term off, they can see their paycheck, they will be able to see their recruit hours for a week. You know, they can see on Wednesday, but they might work the rest of the week, here's where I'll be paying them. So when it comes time, hey, who wants to work around this week? They may take a look at any of them, I don't know if it's HR, but it's sort of app that is able to handle this.
Thank you, it's a couple of questions, just for clarification. Um, for our employees in particular, hourly employees that may have to report to duty in the field.
Yep.
Um, when they get to that job site, they can clock in and clock out at that time from there?
They sure can. So one of the views of this system or any other that we looked at is it's extremely customizable. So we can set it up so that you can clock in from a desktop, so that you can clock in from a time clock if you feel like doing this in certain occasions, so that you can clock in for the afternoon. You can just go in and say, clock in.
Let me give you one other hypothetical. Let's say we have an employee that is married.
Right.
And, um, it's not convenient for them to come to city hall. Can they update their portfolio to show they have a spouse and to get them on the insurance?
Jay, absolutely can. And that is something that is lacking in our system now. Not only can they not update that, they got to tell the HR, they got to bring us the documentation of their choices. We have to copy it, we have to see it, we have to upload it, and it has to go to the public professional. So picture their choices. And not only that, and we have to be able to, and we hope to be able to walk out and kind of, how would you like to be recognized? Because some employees want to be recognized publicly, some, some not. But in those scenarios, if we want to be able to say, hey, everybody, you finally just got married, you know, they put congratulations from the scene, we don't have that right now. We don't really have a true engagement for where our employees can, can come together and communicate from our property.
Jay, one last question too. I think everybody in attendance wants to know if they're in the field and they could clock in and ratchet and bong us?
Well, we're probably going to know this, it had a little bit of a sudden change, but yes, there, there are some technical complications. Our goal through offices is to not to control our employees, to stay here on our employees, you know, but we'll have, we'll have. We'll have some water.
All right, Secretary of State, do you have any other questions, Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's a school looking at? Does that mean you could call and hold your records?
Thank you for asking that. So that is one of the things that we were very careful to ask in the RFP because there is a, with these RFPs or with historical data, um, transition that they specifically do. In the case of pay lossy, I believe it was seven years. And we said, you know what, that's great, but I'll tell you, I'm, I'm feeling the pain every single day because we have employees coming back, previous employees are like, okay, I left seventeen years ago, it's time to retire. And I don't have any information in the system for them. We have to try to find the employees who have pulled for records. So we said, you know, I said, can you do better? And they came back to the table and said, we can import thirty years of pay loss. You know, and there's no, there's no cap on the first capacity and, um, they came back at very, very minimal extra cost because they actually offset the cost of that they gave us two months for it. So when they wouldn't charge us for the extra years of, um, data migration, no, it's not going to add any cost as well.
Get it done. Counsel, your direction.
May I approve the request at present?
Second. Second, all the paper, show hands. Counsel, thank you. Jay, again, thank you. All right, item B, uh, D, consideration request to approve a proposal for professional services submitted by infrastructure management services for updated payment evaluations. This time you got something. That I.
Yeah. Did you?
Yeah, I think it's a cheeky speed series.
Um, yes, sir, this is, as discussed on Tuesday, this is reviewable for the IMS report. We have a point thirteen. This is basically, you know, we got our data that you assess in other ways. Um, this is useful to see, you know, photograph this, kind of see after seeing our management system has its performance over the past six years. Um, the goal of the department is to perform these type of reassessments once every five years. Uh, it's given a second pulse check on the condition of our roadways. And also helps us to quickly all this good decision-making tools when it comes to utilization of funds like SLOSS and CISA and things like that. Um, we reached out to IMS kind of pair down. They offered us a buffet of options for different services they provide. And we pared their services down to what we assessed to the very minimum for what we needed. Um, they gave us a proposal estimate of ninety-five thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. We'll scroll here, please, to the next page. Um, there was some discrepancy, sorry, one more page, uh, sorry.
You give the hundreds, four thousand dollars.
There you go.
One more.
Sorry. And yeah, so there's some discrepancy when we were looking at the mileage that we recorded last time. We threw up some stuff in, in the air miles of many industries that we own. Um, another example, quarter mile of the local bar, which we own and are responsible for making stuff. Um, and so it just kind of gave us a little bit of what we're going to be doing with West ten percent intensity on those professional services, given that it's not a diet and proposal, let's say the proposal estimate. Over so close. There it is. Um, ten percent in tendency of nine thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Um, that brings the total request amount to one or four, usually four fifty. Um, this is a side of the lengthy bid budget, SLOSS for this business here, one twenty or one fifty K. Um, so we were delighted to see this number, how you remember we have to keep this number. Any questions?
Counsel, questions for Ben? Yeah, everybody. All right, let's do it.
Yep.
Counsel, your direction. Second, all the papers, show hands. Counsel, thank you. Again, thank you. To move on. Citizens, if you are in force of the meeting, ask that you can afford to state your name and address. We have to record our policy requires to say under three minutes. Councillor, if you would, if you bring up, forgive. So does have time to be heard, please direct all comments, the council as a whole. Another attempt to engage in the council debate, it's our policy to follow through with you and concern you. We need to after, if I said any groups that want to address the council designated on spokesperson. Again, I'm sure all have time to be heard, I haven't said that. Barbara Rennie says the motion can be heard at this time.
Hello, my name is Marie Willoughby, I'm in the restaurant, second with her, this is. As of records, that's where you want to be in a little place. And again, for the evening, council members and members of the beautiful Dallas community. Um, for the past few years, I've developed this in federal, which actually just means that I've just accomplished the first level of success and now on my way to the second level of success. And I've been taking the past few years to redevelop and strengthen my organization by updating my accounting processes, procedures and documents. And now I say that I am currently level two of success. I'm here today for the most sponsorship and partnership of our ability to the ministry of black and love. Our roles master our humanity, human inclusion and provide the ways for the marginalized members of the community. I am inclined zero in my own organization, world partnership initiative. And more about point is available through QR code, we will become one of your people down the tube. Um, so far, I have successfully obtained one of those programs for employee building skills, work processes, social connection, and access to the administrative department. And I am continuing to work and redevelop skills and our workplace are working to connect with the key members of the community and hopefully you guys will take part in that and help grow. Um, if anyone isn't clear sharp and that includes those that are beginning on line, is interested if you may submit requests for video information, P S X, at two two nine six three zero eight two six. There is screening process and again, we are not creating the will. There is competitive advantage, which will be detailed previously. Sorry, finally, you can. Um, you may know the organization that provides cautious, qualified individuals and they have targeted interests of certain demographic individuals. Just ended by this month, they're now women's history month, the next month is international women's history month. The May is Asian Pacific holiday month. As we qualify all of these, and I am also faith-based, faith-based on the new advice system of American community. So with resources and time, people that you know from the community, I'm sure that they're being provided to us. And that is why I'm here. I am invited to be part of my success, we're setting my priorities to meet. And I need very also the word out with the board, so if you could please write this to your church, church conference company, again, your reputation is valuable to the community. Your heritage as you are, I want you to just know, you smell like heritage and help me build values that, that. Um, so if I can.
You just said a lot of capable, all proud.
Sure, thank you so much.
You're awesome. And where you feel like if you set it on.
Yes, that's not, not to let, you have to be intentional, we as members of the community have to be intentional. So I will go to you visiting that venue, leaving comments of how you feel. Hey, thank you.
You're awesome, sir.
Yes, you're awesome.
All right, the other citizens, motion can be heard at this time. Okay.
My name is, uh, Bob, busy, uh, uh, busy, one more, you know, with the boulevard. Uh, spoken for dedication, uh, private office, it's a very hard mission, uh, uh, left, uh, captain. Have a more, uh, uh, litter, uh, city, crash that city. Uh, uh, you know, the company is coming, coming, obviously, the COVID was, uh, issue. Of people, you know, more people's heart mission, uh, citations, people who have political promotion on earth. And, you know, stronger culture, uh, just recently, yeah, promotion, uh, the first, most you see like this. And then another one, utility's, which is, uh, that's your floor, the earth, you see, like this. Um, the thing of it is, uh, obviously, uh, they have probably been, including, uh, practicing a lot of videos and, uh, have been on cleanups, et cetera. Uh, and one too, but there's, there's a trash can with it, so all trash cans. But it requires each apartment with so many excellent partners, all that excellent trash cans. And, uh, uh, a couple of years ago, I sat through it, put in about a hundred seat of this, of those. And from there, I was, and with the promotion, we did pressure, we should say. Uh, the county sports, loans, open, the target, all ended up, uh, putting trash cans out. And, uh, the other reviews, uh, issues were closed out by the division of evidence base. Uh, and if you go to the mall, cover sixty meters, and there is zero trash cans in the mall apartment. There are zero trash cans where Halloween is, where tire supply is, where some of these central hotspots are in good position to be gone and clean up. So going out cleaning these trash hotspots, uh, but really, the thing first is we need to keep them coming back. It's trash cans, it's not the sole solution, but having trash cans out, just like putting a market out there, have to even it out the river. The market must break, break, uh, engineer control. We need more engineer control, industry control, not asking to, uh, add any new laws, new ordinances or people, you see, you have, you have, you just not enforced and right clear, like pull up fifty secret fix where and say, hey, trash can violation, what's wrong with this, report, correct, just as your personnel are pushing for. And then, you know, initial rally, it was a charge of enforcement, and then all you can make sure of that. And this enforcement, she knows it closes the ball, pencil-whipped it, whatever, as saying it's all fixed. But there's clearly not. So I would ask ultimately, is that trash can order still out? Is it, is it a viable for law? It is not an allegation, but, uh, from my understanding, it still exists, it does.
Oh, no, it's a third one. The other citizens, motion can be heard at this time. Your head.
Very good, City Council. Oh, very good, A O A, my, my circle. Um, I'm here just, first thing I want to say is, I want to applaud the, the council, uh, city manager, everybody in the administration, what they've worked to do in the past thirteen months. Um, I heard you period, because, uh, we don't know what that, but collectively, what you've done in bringing us back to, to a place where we, it's remarkable. So with that said, that's more what we, as a community, want to continue to see is that we keep the hospital beautiful, right? And so with her things in mind, part of the, what we see played out, um, with concern with regard to the light and the light, uh, with our properties, is it seems to be that perhaps our enforcement, our parents or ordinance have fallen by. As the, the council will consider, taking a fresh look at this ordinance is, perhaps we need to put some teeth in the high wooden horse street from a property that is a rental. And, um, prior to the lien, I, I was dealing with an issue with, uh, the property not being taken care of. Um, we have the lounge period for hurricane, um, so get people off, some winged here, get recovered. And I did credit to that, but it, it, it became a law and then it comes. And I did credit to that, but it, it, it came along, and here it comes. Uh, that was a day, then here comes the wind. My point is this, uh, we still see many areas of town post hurricanes, and now, if they're likely, or who knows what's going on. I ask that you look at these ordinances, and, well, they're hardly yet, are the, are the ordinances out there? Do we need to look more to in rules in, in, in the ordinances? Because if we don't, this can affect property managers, and it will affect the community, this community, this town, with the way you're on. So, I appreciate that.
Very good, very, very. We got any other citizens which can be heard at this time? Seeing none of the clothes out of that portion of the evening, turn it over to Richie Hardy, city manager's report.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, we have a lot going on this coming weekend, starting out Friday evening. Our first Friday, Main Street Downtown, I'll offer, uh, come out and, and score downtown business for a unforgettable night out. On the eighth, March eighth, Saturday, Unity Park, Alzeli, Apple Dark. Bring your chairs, plates, and get ready for a evening to remember. Uh, this will be following the, the actual, uh, Alzeli festival, which will take place, uh, this Saturday and Sunday at Dressel Park, the festival will run from ten AM to six PM, both days, featuring huge kids' home, a lot of music, uh, international food court, a five K rope race, and much more. Also on Saturday, March eighth, Joey Travolta returns to Valdosta to screen, to stream Lights Camera Friendship as part of the twenty twenty-five South Toyota Film Festival. The festival's stream will be done at the Dossa Playhouse, Saturday, March eighth, at seven PM. Limited seating, event free to the public. Monday, March tenth, the seventeenth annual Valdosta People's Choice Photo Contest. New categories and rules, I'll then introduce. Application open on eight AM, for submission. And Mayor, I know you're going to go into detail on your, uh, event that takes place on the, on March fifteenth.
I would like to ask on the body. So, yeah, March fifteenth, thank you, very much. Um, what a busy weekend this weekend, please take in all that you can. We got B C D Art Park, Samantha kicking off off Lady of the Camps Rose, it's going to kick off the entire, uh, city festival weekend. Uh, then we roll into the Alzeli five K on Saturday morning at eight AM over in Veca. We roll right into that festival, ten to six, both days, Saturday and Sunday. You heard Saturday night, we, we keep the party rolling over here at Unity Park, another Alzeli after dark, bunch of artists and food trucks, and a big dinner. And then I'm sure we can pull together back, um, because in town, actually, you're building that, you'll recognize, you can cut the screen, all locations that the, that the young men and women on the spectrum actually took part in. Um, the folks who has the access to it, and downtown social, and any other places that are, and our panel, we put together this fantastic reality show. Fall weekend, March fifteenth, is the mayor's panel, the mayor's chairman's panel. Uh, the, uh, location in print, it's going to be Landale Park, to where Berta's used to be, Berta's out to, uh, Sugar, uh, Trueville Boat Ground. Um, it's looking more and more like we might go to Trueville Boat Ground, it's starting tomorrow, we're going to wait another week to see what the water does, and see what the, the deadfall, sharelun, if it starts to drop, and otherwise. Please join us for that, it's our commitment to our public ways and our blue ways, we want to make their activities for all. And, uh, and it's also our commitment to keeping our clean as well. So please join us, it's absolutely free, and it's still granted by Georgia Power, anybody wants to show up. Uh, if you show up for nothing, we got votes. So we, we actually bring votes from the university, and the boys and girls love, so anybody wants to join us again, um, and get it started. So start at eight o'clock, lights will start fading at ten o'clock, we have a shift out being, it's a good show, um, for you to relax, so please join us. It's a, it's a fun weekend. Um, that's all I have, Council. Oh, no, before I, before I'm leaving, I believe that attendance has a leadership level, it's earned class boost, and earned class of twenty twenty-five. If they would stand, would be recognized. Part of their requirement of the last year is that kind of very exciting city council meeting and very boring kind of fish meeting. I never, I never lived with, Council, Eric.
Mayor, now that we're starting to get back to normal, opening up and starting, you know, after a hurricane, the thing that, uh, that's, you know, our community, take it long, just take it out, um, our fellow employees, we have F B I agents, we have people that work at me, we have people that work at our social security office and our big hospital. And, uh, these are our neighbors, our friends, we chat with our soldiers, and we're the church person, our pastor, person, our call, so that's asked, uh, we, um, keep a company, man, while we're on the east, and so, yeah.
Anything?
Uh, yeah, just two things, uh, pretty important to counter, and you'll mind, uh, Miracle League, Valdosta, our angels have started this week. Uh, it'll run through April, the fifteenth week. Uh, this is a time for our folks and our kids, getting together and playing baseball, and, you know, buddies to volunteer, so, so if you have anything going on, do this in the first place. Um, lots of nights, you know, more, we can go out there, I'm sure they can use y'all as volunteers, or at least have a good time to watch the kids and go play. Uh, the second thing is, we have a lot of events going on, a lot of things happening, as you can see, uh, a lot of stuff for nonprofits. Uh, I do want to encourage y'all to support the nonprofits, and, you know, because we all, we all have to play a big role in our community as far as like helping each other out, as far as, um, you know, I don't want to start gaining off names, as far as that goes. But, uh, I'll call for, you know, nonprofits this month, or last week, which I guess will be in this month, so, so we're in. We, we have a, a close question as far as nonprofits goes. We also know too, that we're trying to figure out how we can put that same pot of money as well with everybody in this community. And that being said, you know, a little bit goes the wrong way, so any, anything you can do to help nonprofits is great. Whether it be show up, to volunteer, or give it your time, or just spread the word, if you can, for it, you know, that's fine, nothing wrong with that. But anything that you can do to help us out, that'd be great as well. Uh, we have a lot of great organizations to, in this community that feel like that, and, um, and so, we're kind of hurt right now, you know, with the lungs and stuff. So that'd be great, if we can all, uh.
Anybody? Kevin?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, Mary, Mrs. Groome, sorry, I don't remember your first name, Shirley and Judy, uh, they come from a bright neighborhood here in town, Smithfield and Pine Point, and they have been immensely patient, uh, as the city code enforcement has worked on addressing some issues in their neighborhood. And, um, while I understand that there was a pause in code enforcement after the hurricanes, but, um, there is a renewed focus. We've had some meetings here just this past week, uh, looking at different ways we can help make things happen. I'm not going to say it, I promise you something's waiting, but you just forget the promise, just do it. Uh, but if, if any changes come up for us to consider in regards to how the ordinance is drafted, I certainly will be happy to get with each and every one of you to get your.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just want to touch on a couple of things, a couple, uh, events that I was feeling in March, these March, uh, April eleventh and twelfth, we got a Bluesberry Festival. And that is, uh, going to be big this year, so we need, uh, uh, your support, we want everybody to come out. Also, April the fifth, though, Dancing with the Stars. Yeah, I got my sister on, you know, being out there, you know, a little, little something, so I would definitely love to have your support. It's a great cause for, um, going for Valdosta State for the arts program. So, uh, definitely need you guys to support, to go out and, and watch me do a little tango, so, you know, I mean.
Did you ever experience that, that we're taking checks?
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, we're going to do that, I got you. But thank y'all for coming.
Thank you. Most of you, Eric.
So, man.
Thank you.